Oh, yea, oh, yea, oh, yea. Silence is commanded by this honorable commission. All those having business, draw near.
Thank you. Good morning and let me thank you for your patience with us, all right? But we were not just standing around, we were doing business of the county. So you may be seated at this time and as you being seated, let me ask you now. You've heard the command that silence is commanded? Please ma'am, please sir, check everybody. Check your cell phones. If you got a pager, check your pager. Check whatever it is you need to check so that it doesn't go off because I got the major here and the major got backup and I don't want your cell phone to go spend the weekend at our bed and breakfast. Because they will take it there. I've asked you to be seated at this time as we get ready for our inspiration and then our invocation. And when Pastor Shavers gets ready for his invocation, I'm gonna ask you to re-stay in, right? And as he go through prayer with us and then after the prayer, Commissioner Noah will lead us in to the pledge of allegiance. Today, we are so happy to have Pastor David Shavers who is a native of Montgomery, Alabama. He spent seven years in the US Army as a veteran in logistics and upper armor heavy military vehicles and packaged petroleum products. His military service took him to Afghanistan, Iraq, Kuwait, South Carolina, Virginia, Texas, Tennessee, I'm sorry, Kentucky and then Georgia. And he received his honorable discharge in 2013. Pastor Shavers preached his first initial sermon at the Happy Home Missionary Baptist Church and where he was licensed and ordained, he was an associate minister there for five years. He currently serves in his ninth year as pastor of the First Friendship Missionary Baptist Church. He's married for eighteen years and they have two daughters and a set of twins, all right? Who run the house. He's avid football fan, all right? And if you wanna know now, don't start no uproar in here because I realize we in Georgia, but he a Alabama Crimson Tide. He always rolling the tide, all right? At this time, let me call Pastor Shavers as he may come forth, the mic is yours, and ask you as you get ready for prayer, you ask us to stand.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's our Chairman Ellison. All of the commission is honor and pleasure to be here and we are grateful for it. The devotional message this morning comes from the Book of Micah, chapter six, verse eight, where the word declares, "He has shown you, O man, what is good; and what does the Lord require of you but to do justice, to love mercy, and to walk humbly with your God." Then Jeremiah twenty-nine seven says, "Seek the peace and the prosperity of the city; pray to the Lord, for it is because of it it prospers." You too will prosper. As we begin this day together, I want to thank you for your service. I want to thank you for your commitment that you bring to leading our county. The work you do is more than just business. It's stewardship and the community may see decisions and policies, but God sees something deeper this morning. He sees leaders entrusted with influence. He sees leaders who are working for the good of His people. And that's the thought I want to leave you with today is leading for the good of the city. And I love Micah six eight because it gives us a compass for leadership. Number one, He tells us to do justice. Justice is more than a legal term, it's a moral direction. It asks what is right, who is lifted and who is protected. Justice ensures that every neighbor is treated with dignity, especially those who doesn't have a voice in the room. Number two, He tells us to love mercy. Mercy is compassionate action. It sees people before problems. It asks, "How would I want to be treated if I were in their shoes?" Mercy reminds us that good leadership is not only about efficiency, but it's also about empathy. And number three, it tells us to walk humbly. Humility is not weakness, it's wisdom. It listens before it leads. It makes space for collaboration, not competition, and it leaves room for God's guidance and grace.
Oh, yea, oh, yea, oh, yea. Silence is commanded by this honorable commission. All those having business, draw near.
Thank you. Good morning, and let me thank you for your patience with us, all right? But we were not just standing around, we were doing business of the county. So you may be seated at this time, and as you being seated, let me ask you now. You've heard the command that silence is commanded? Please, ma'am, please, sir, check everybody. Check your cellphones. If you got a pager, check your pager. Check whatever it is you need to check so that it doesn't go off, because I got the major here, and the major got backup, and I don't want your I don't want your cellphone to go spend the weekend at our bed and breakfast. Because they will take it there. I've asked you to be seated at this time as we get ready for our inspiration and then our invocation. And when Pastor Shavers gets ready for his invocation, I'm gonna ask you to re-stay in, right? And as he go through prayer with us, and then after the prayer, Commissioner Noah will lead us in to the Pledge of Allegiance. Today, we are so happy to have Pastor David Shavers, who is a native of Montgomery, Alabama. He spent seven years in the U.S. Army as a veteran in logistics in upper armor heavy military vehicles and packaged petroleum products. His military service took him to Afghanistan, Iraq, Kuwait, South Carolina, Virginia, Texas, Tennessee, I'm sorry, Kentucky, and then Georgia, and he received his honorable discharge in 2013. Pastor Shavers preached his first initial sermon at the Happy Home Missionary Baptist Church, and where he was licensed and ordained, he was an associate minister there for five years. He currently serves in his ninth year as pastor of the First Friendship Missionary Baptist Church. He's married for eighteen years, and they have two daughters and a set of twins, all right? Who run the house. He's avid football fan, all right? And if you want to know now, don't start no uproar in here, because I realize we in Georgia, but he a Alabama Crimson Tide. He always rolling the tide, right? At this hour, at this time, let me call Pastor Shavers, as he may come forward, the mic is yours, and ask you, as you get ready for prayer, you ask us to stand.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's our Chairman Ellis, and all of the commissioners, it's honor and pleasure to be here, and we are grateful for it. The devotional message this morning comes from the Book of Micah, Chapter six, verse eight, where the word declares, "He has shown you, O man, what is good; and what does the Lord require of you, but to do justice, to love mercy, and to walk humbly with your God." Then Jeremiah twenty-nine, seven says, "Seek the peace and the prosperity of the city; pray to the Lord, for it is because of it it prospers." You too will prosper. As we begin this day together, I want to thank you for your service, I want to thank you for your commitment that you bring to leading our county. The work you do is more than just business, it's stewardship. And the community may see decisions and policies, but God sees something deeper this morning. He sees leaders entrusted with influence, he sees leaders who are working for the good of his people. And that's the thought I want to leave you with today, is leading for the good of the city. And I love Micah six, eight, because it gives us a compass for leaderships. Number one, he tells us to do justice. Justice is more than a legal term, it's a moral direction. It asks what is right, who is lifted, and who is protected. Justice ensures that every neighbor is treated with dignity, especially those who doesn't have a voice in the room. Number two, he tells us to love mercy. Mercy is compassionate action. It sees people before problems. It asks, "How would I want to be treated if I were in their shoes?" Mercy reminds us that good leadership is not only about efficiency, but it's also about empathy. And number three, he tells us to walk humbly. Humility is not weakness, it's wisdom. It listens before it leads, it makes space for collaboration, not competition, and it leaves room for God's guidance and grace. Then Jeremiah twenty-nine, seven tells us to seek the peace and prosperity of the city. The word "seek" is active, it means to pursue, to work for it, to pray for it. And when the city prospers, everybody prospers. So as you work and lead today, remember this simple truth. Justice is the compass, mercy is the heart, and humility is the posture. And when justice guides the decision, mercy shapes the response, and when humility marks the heart, the whole county grows stronger. Will you stand and pray with me? Gracious God, we thank you for this new day, and for these leaders who rise early to serve. Grant them clarity where there's complexity, grant them unity where there's difference, and courage where there's uncertainty. Let justice be established in this county, let mercy be extended in every decision, and humility guide every step. Bless the families, bless the neighborhoods, bless the schools, and every home representative here. Lord, protect our first responders, strengthen our businesses, and provide for those who are in need. And Lord, may the work done in this room today be a foundation of hope for generations tomorrow. And it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Commissioner Noah?
A pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. To Pastor Shavers, let me thank you again for taking time out of your busy schedule to come and to lead us in our inspiration and our invocation, and I'm so glad that you can give us instructions that we know comes from a power higher than us, it comes from the Lord, as to how we should conduct ourselves as we conduct the business of this county. Again, I say thank you, and God bless you. Roll call.
Chester A. Ellis, Chairman.
Present.
Bobby Lockett, Vice Chairman, District three.
Present.
Melinda Scott Hodge, Chairman, Pro Tem, District two.
Present.
Anthony Wayne Noah, District one.
Here.
Patrick K. Farrell, District four.
Here.
Tanya Milton, District five.
Present.
Erin Whitley, District six.
Here.
Dean Kickleyder, District seven.
He's here.
Marsha Buford, District eight.
Present.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Kickleyder's here, he's marked present. All right, at this time, we go for our proclamations and our special presentation, and Mr. Manager will call upon you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, good morning. I'm going to ask that our Human Resources team come to the front as we recognize our employees for their various years of service.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The employees that we're recognizing this morning have a combined total of two-hundred-and-fifty-five years of service, and although our words can't express our thanks to you for your dedication and commitment, we hope that this small token of appreciation will say that to you. With twenty-five years of service, Ms. Merlin Rouge. The following employees have twenty years of service. Mr. Albert Marcantonio. Sergeant Jacqueline Sutton. The following employees have fifteen years of service. Lieutenant Brian LeClaire. Ms. Amy Rowe, with the Clerk of Superior Court. Ms. Sandra Akins. Ms. Trudy Knight. The following employees have ten years of service. Ms. Rosalyn Davis. Ms. Margaret Vincent. Sergeant Kwanda Lewis. Deputy Corrections Officer Iris Harris. Another ten years of service, the lady behind the camera, Ms. Sally Jackson. Sarah Root Caprishi. Christian White Way. Corporal Deandre Gibbs. And Jacob Bostick. The following employees have five years of service. Ms. Tulia Kirkland. Dylan Layton. Adam Copeland. Abraham Harris. Ty Campbell. John William Farrell. Dustin Turk. And we'd also like to recognize Judge Tracy Mackey with magistrate court with five years of service.
Thank you, and let me say to all of our employees, we thank you for what you do, for what you do helps to keep this county safe and secure, as well as it helps us to get the work done here that this commission is responsible for. At this time, let me take, before we do any breaking out, let me take and recognize the constitutional officers that are here, I see the Clerk of Superior Court here, all right? All right? Okay, from the sheriff's office, we have the Major Mackey, and from the fire department, we have the chief with us, all right? So we thank you all for being here. All right, as we move on, we don't have any chairman item, we don't have any commissioner items, all right? There's a table item, amend to amendment to Chapter twenty-four, Article one, flood damage prevention ordinance, F D P O, to establish consistency in the format with other counties' ordinances and provide clarity to the residents and developers on developing requirements in the various special flood hazard areas, S F H A, located in unincorporated Chatham County in the Chatham County Codebook. May I have a motion to take it off the table?
Motion to remove item one.
Ben, properly motion is second that the item be taken off the table, are you ready for the question? Please cast your votes. All right, all votes are in. All right, items for individual action. To request board approval of the following. Oh, I'm sorry, that's right, that's right, we voted to take it off the table. All right, let me have a motion to approve. Properly motion is second that we amend in Chapter twenty-four, Article one. Ready for the question? Let's cast your votes. All right, now, all votes in, I read it, moving too fast. Item for individual action, to request board approval of the following budget amendments and transfers. One, in the special service district fund, transfer thirty-two thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars from contingency to recorder's court salaries. Two, in the capital improvement program, A, increased rent revenue and expenditures in the Greenbrier renovation project, forty-eight thousand dollars, is their motion. The property motion is second that the request be approved, are you ready for the question? Please cast your votes. All right. Two, a resolution to amend local Act three, twenty-three, passed as House Bill seven fifty-six, H B seven fifty-six, at the twenty-twenty-five session of the General Assembly, that unconstitutionally vacated the Board of Directors of the Chatham Area Transit Authority, C A T, in violation of Transit Authority Act, O C G A, thirty-two dash nine dash nine, back to the law, as it exists prior to local act twenty-twenty-three, passed as House Bill seven fifty-six, is their motion.
So move.
All right, second. All right, properly motion is second, ready for questions? All right, I see Commissioner Kickleyder.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just want to state for the record, and so that our local delegation will know, that it's definitely my understanding and my personal belief that the majority of our local delegation really didn't realize the impact of what was going to take place with the passage of this, what passed at the state level, and that they definitely would not have received the same type of legal advice on the matter that we're hearing, that our legal advice says it was illegal. And in their defense, I'm sure they heard opposite of that, but I do just want to say, after doing some research with some, you know, with the knowledge about our delegation, that definitely, I believe that the majority really did not understand the impact, and that they don't, if you will, have a dog in this fight, and it is up for us, up to us, to straighten out the problem, as the state law says, that we're supposed to actually do, so, thank you.
And I just want to say I concur with you wholeheartedly, because that's my Any other, Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can we address, because, you know, the majority of my citizens, well, all of my citizens reside within the city, a lot of them rely on public transportation, so can we address any concern someone may have regarding operations as far as this action is concerned?
This action does not affect operation at all.
Okay.
All right, not one hundred percent.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Lockett.
Mr. Chairman, I very much agree with Mr. Kickleyder on this situation. I don't think everybody knew, had all the information needed to make an informed decision. That's pretty well what I have to deal with.
Okay, Commissioner Farrell?
Yeah, the resolution adds a lot more confusion to what's going on between what's going on with the CAT board. I'd prefer that we table it and have negotiation with whoever we need to negotiate with to see if there's some common ground here, so I won't be supporting the resolution today.
Okay. Commissioner Whitley?
Table it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just want to make the statement that, you know, though this is, I know there's a lot of fanfare behind this, if you will, we as a commission have a responsibility to our constituents, to our community, to be very good stewards of their dollars, and more importantly, just good stewards to the community at large. And I want this to just serve as a reminder that this commission is willing to do what we need to do to stand up for our constituents and our citizens in the name of accountability. And this resolution, even though it may be unpopular, we're still doing what we need to do. This is a step in the process to really work towards accountability, and I just want that to be stated for the record, that we are, even when unpopular, doing what we need to do to stand up for our citizens and our constituents.
Okay, Commissioner Noah? Okay, Commissioner Noah?
I'm hesitant as well, um, taking action on this, as, as it was mentioned, that some communication, collaboration, whatever, and, um, trying to resolve the issues that are currently, um, around this whole CAT issue, I just, um, wish that we could slow it down a little bit and table it and, and make those discussions, and then I would feel a little more confident in voting one way or the other.
Alright, Commissioner Hart?
Mr. Chairman, does this action prevent us from entering into discussion with?
No, not at all.
Okay, thank you.
It doesn't, it doesn't prevent us from doing anything.
Thank you.
Alright, it's just, as, as Commissioner Whiteley said, he said it eloquently, it's a step in the process, alright? Got all unreadiness? Alright, you got a motion too? Alright, you got a second, we got all unreadiness, please cast your votes. Alright, we good. Alright, get our quarterly report?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask Deputy Director Flood, if you'll come to the podium and provide us with brief, uh, quarterly report.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Dan Flood, I'm the deputy director, you don't see me often, I'm usually Director Sarhat's here, but his youngest daughter's getting married this week, weekend, so, uh, he's, he's partying it up in Knoxville.
Okay.
So, uh, we'll start off with, uh, did anybody have any questions about the report that you were given? Then we'll go right into what C N T's been up to, uh, for the last quarter.
Where, where's Robin, can you?
Yeah, I, I don't know where.
There she go, alright, you gonna have to stay right there and help him now.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Thank you. So for twenty-twenty-five, so far, we've had twenty-four overdose callouts, uh, fifteen of those, uh, were overdose notifications, and we've had, uh, so far nineteen overdose deaths that C N T has adopted. Thirteen of the tox screens completed, four were for fentanyl and various drugs, four cocaine and five natural were comeback negative. Public awareness, most of you have seen our ADAP trailer, trailer's built up like a kid's bedroom, we've had over three hundred of those tours that have been given so far this year. O D cases in prep for grand jury, we've got three for state court and one for federal court so far. Want to highlight, one of our investigations started out as an O D investigation, is still under investigation, so I can't be real specific, but I wanted to give you a, a concept of what our O D investigators are doing. They executed a search warrant on a house looking for a cellphone, actually a couple of cellphones, that's all they were looking for, was a couple of cellphones, in conjunction with an overdose death, and, uh, out of that, they got three kilograms of fentanyl, one and a half kilograms of cocaine, and a third kilogram of methamphetamine. So you can see here, uh, that's about eight hundred grams of cocaine, actually, it's that one right there, that's about eight hundred grams of cocaine, um, the next one is about two thousand grams of fentanyl. That's, uh, once it's taken out of the backpack. The next is seven hundred and seventy-two grams of cocaine. And another two hundred and sixty-two grams of fentanyl. All in all, this is what we got out of the, uh, out of the house, so a lot of drugs for just a warrant for, uh, for cellphones, um, but that shows you what we're, what we're up against, as far as these poly-drug dealers and what they're doing, they're killing people. Normally, these, these overdose deaths would just be overdose, uh, but because C N T's now taking the lead in investigating these overdose deaths, and they're, we're actually putting people in jail for it. Alright, for tactical teams, we received a complaint, uh, neighbor called, in reference to, his neighbor had pot plants, marijuana plants, growing up over his, uh, his fence. So we came by.
It's a good crop.
We, uh, we found that it was actually marijuana, we got a search warrant, knocked on the door, and went, we got about seventy-four marijuana plants, uh, just growing in this guy's backyard.
You thought it was grass?
Yes, it was.
It was grass?
Yeah.
Good Lord. Man, right. You're right.
Yeah, so, uh, major case in, uh, twenty-twenty-three began an investigation into fifteen to twenty members of an organization, um, to date, they've seized three hundred and thirteen grams of cocaine, three hundred and forty-nine grams of marijuana, two hundred and fifteen grams of M D M A ecstasy, uh, five point two grams of fentanyl, fifty-six point four grams of various pills, which turned out to be half Xanax and half counterfeit, um, and then seventy-one, or seven point one grams of cocaine. That's the Xanax, that's the, the counterfeit, we're not really sure, it's at the lab now, trying to determine what it actually is, uh, that's the M D M A. And the cocaine. Big part of our, our process now is, not only are we enforcement, but we're trying to get the word out, and our positive peer influencer program is a huge success in the schools now, uh, they've done an amazing job, they're, they're out there, they're, the high schoolers going to the middle schoolers and teaching this program, uh, and so they don't have some old guy, gray hair, standing up there telling them, say no to drugs, this is their peers that are actually coming into the schools and trying to give them, um, a way to say no, to choose to refuse. These are the schools that are, uh, for this year that are participating in high schools, Beach, New Hampstead, Jenkins, Islands, Windsor Forest, Groves, Johnson, and Savannah Arts, and they're going into the middle schools, Durin, New Hampstead, Myers, Coastal, Georgetown, Mercer, Isle of Hope, and Garrison, uh, so not only are they going into their, their own schools, are going into the middle schools and teaching this program, they also come out and help us with the, the trailer, uh, they, they do a lot of stuff on their own time to be part of this program, and it's, they, each of them should be commended. With that, that's all I have, are there any questions?
Questions, alright, Commissioner Noah?
Yes, sir, and I'm not sure if you can even, if you're involved, or if you're able to comment about a situation or a case that occurred yesterday in Sandfly, were y'all involved with that?
Is that the dogfighting?
But I think it involved a lot of other stuff.
So, uh, just what I've, I've gotten off of the news and word of mouth, that was a really good, uh, arrest by the sheriff's department, uh, we didn't know anything about it.
Okay.
But, uh, we're, anytime drugs, guns, and the people that bring those, that stuff into our community, that they can be taken off the street, you know, we would, we were relishing it, the one thing we would caution is that, you know, C N T, let C N T be a part of it, you know, de-conflict with us.
I've just received a lot of phone calls being in my district, sir.
That was solely sheriff's department.
Thank you.
Alright, any other questions? You know, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Alright. Alright, may I have a motion to accept the action count in its entirety? Is there a second? Properly motioned, and second that we accept the action count in its entirety, are you ready for the question? Please cast your votes. Waiting on one and four? Four? Alright. First reader, we will read into the records today. Amendment to chapter thirteen, article two, Chatham Area Transit Authority, section two zero six, entitled Membership, as it relates to the local act under the authority provided by the Georgia Constitution to the law existing prior to the twenty-twenty-five general, uh, I mean amendment, alright, is read into the record, we'll have the second reading at the next commission meeting. Now we go to our second readers, amendment to chapter sixteen, article one, entitled Business, General Provision's Ordinance, Business License Ordinance. May I have a motion now?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to open a public hearing, is this, yeah?
That's public comments.
Uh, open a public comment?
Public comments. Alright, is there anyone here who would like to speak on this?
Is there a second or?
I'll second.
Alright, properly motioned, and second that we open the public comment period, alright? Is there anyone? Alright, hearing none, uh, we didn't have to go through the motion to second, we just had to open up, alright, yeah, okay, so, so now the amendment is on the table, may I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the amendment to chapter sixteen, article one.
Is there a second? Properly motioned, and second that we amend chapter sixteen, article one, are you ready for the question? Please cast your votes. Alright, two, to delete and replace chapter ten, article three, entitled Private Detective, Private Security Business Alarm System Business of the Chatham County Code, uh, is there, is there anyone here who wants to speak, uh, public comments on this? Anyone in the audience? Alright, hearing none, may I have a motion to approve, to delete, by approving to delete?
Second.
Properly motioned, and second that, uh, it be, uh, granted, are you ready for the question? Please cast your votes. Alright, thank you. Mr. Manager, where in your hands?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, uh, you have a packet of information with, uh, some updates in front of you, but a couple that I want to really highlight, uh, one is, uh, in the packet, you've got aerial photos of the progress we're making at Stale Park on the Aeronazium, uh, that project is coming along like gangbusters, and we should be finished soon, and we'll have a ribbon cutting out there once we get the project complete, uh, you've got some resiliency up, program updates in your packet, uh, also I want to make sure you have on your calendars that our, uh, our, uh, appreciation day for our public safety officers, uh, and that's going to be on September twentieth, uh, at Memorial Stadium from ten to two P M, and we encourage all commissioners to come out if you can, uh, and last, uh, we've got updates from the Parks and Recreation Department, and want to remind you again about the, uh, pending legislative dinner that we've got tended to be scheduled for the sixth of November, uh, out at the Botanical Gardens, and that's all my reports, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, uh, question, Commissioner Farrell?
Thank you. We have a splotch project to build a large recreational center, and we're fixing to go and ask the voters for another, um, to vote for another splotch, I'm a little concerned at the pace that we're working on, uh, we've identified a site, and we've got some preliminary drawings, but the, the pace that we're taking to get this project shovel-ready and coming up out of the ground is concerning to me, uh, not only that our children and, and folks are not, uh, able to use it currently, um, but it may have a, an impact, um, on voters' willingness to go for more splotch, if, is there any updates, any sense of urgency to get this project moving and getting it going, or where are we on this?
Uh, yes, sir.
Particularly splotch project?
Yes, sir, and I, I agree with you, uh, as, uh, I think this commission has, uh, made a determination that they, we want to scale back the size of it, it's, it's going to be more along the lines of four to six courts, we're working, uh, to establish the design team now, uh, and we should see some progress on that coming forward.
Why would we consider scaling back a, a project that would have major, major impact on our community in a number of different ways, uh, not only economically, but, uh, which, which would have a huge impact when you're bringing in larger groups to have, uh, competitive tournaments, but also for the, for the very folks that live here, the three hundred, three hundred and ten thousand people, there's, you know, tens of thousands of children that would, uh, be positively impacted by a, a, a large sports facility, uh, we, we seem to have the funding for, uh, expanding the courthouse, we have funding for drastically expanding our jailhouse, uh, I think those are, uh, necessary, of course, but if we could get on the front end of, uh, positive influences for our youth, maybe we wouldn't have such a need on the back end, and we could improve outcomes and improve lives on, on a lot of different levels, so pushing this, scaling this back makes very little, uh, long-term sense for the betterment of our community, I mean, this is a project that will have impact for fifty years, sixty, seventy, eighty years going forward, the, uh, the site is, is, is large enough for our original intention, the funding that we have could scale back maybe on the complexity of the building, but the size of the building, we, we could use different, uh, building methods to build a very large building, and still stay within whatever budget that the commission feels like is, uh, appropriate for this project, but to scale back the size really defeats the, the purpose of bringing more tournaments to Chatham County, and keeping these travel ball, uh, families from having to spend weekend after weekend after weekend in a different community, at their expense of hotel rooms and, and, and restaurant food and travel, gas, what have you, uh, I, I think we should really look at value engineering the building, and keeping it large, and keeping it open for the, for the future, and look at it as a fifty-year mortgage, and not as a one-year, one-time expense that's, uh, gonna hit us in the pocketbook, I, I really inquire and hope that my fellow commissioners would give it some deep thought before we just slash it back in, uh, for immediate expediency, and not look at it long-term as a, one of many building blocks to improve outcomes for all of our citizens, especially our young people, we, we need to get them to read on third grade level, every single child in this county, and we need to give them positive things to do, just like C N T is using peer pressure to keep people, or encourage pe, young people to make the correct decisions, we have to, we have to, as leaders of the community, provide opportunities for young people to thrive, and to have positive influences, I think a volunteer coach or a paid coach in any sport is much preferable over to the influences of the, of a person with too much time on their hands, and falling under the influence of characters that don't have that young person's best interest in mind, and I think sports is a great vehicle to do this, and I believe that we should keep the size of this building as. as we had intended with a minimum of twelve basketball courts and show the world that Chatham County leadership cares about our young people and wants to do the best we can for them and that recreation should be an important part, as important or not, or, or more important than catching the end product, which is youth, young teenagers and twenty-year-olds stacked up in the judicial system, on probation, in the jail, clogging up the courtrooms for all kinds of things that if we could have caught a little earlier and provided better influences, we could have better outcomes. So I encourage everybody on this commission, rather than slashing some, the Taj Mahal, let's just re-engineer it where we can keep the size and provide the service and maybe not the sparkle, if that's necessary. But we are a very prosperous county compared to many, 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 many counties anywhere near here. And we should produce a project that we would all be proud of and the citizens. I will harp back to Memorial Stadium. A great stadium that the county built many, many decades ago that was fallen on disrepair. And this commission took it upon themselves to replace it and it is a shining example. And I believe the school board's probably copied it multiple times on different campuses because of the leadership of this county commission. And that thing will serve the public in many different capacities for many, many decades to come. It's well-built, well-thought-out, well-structured. We can do the same with this and we can be leaders and, and, and set in motion something that has never been done in this county before. And there are no counties anywhere near us or cities that have, have invested in their youth for a facility such as this one. So not only for the youth, but there's a business component where you're, you know, there, there's businesses, small businesses nearby that would thrive with large population of people coming and going and visiting that part of town. So, and they may be spending the night at some of the South Side hotels, who knows? Um, there, there's a lot of different components, but the main one is, what are we gonna do for the youth of this community? How are we gonna help the next two or three generations or four or five or six or seven generations have better outcomes? Now, this is not a fantasy. It will not solve all the issues that, that the youth face, but it's a step in the right direction and, and I believe that the, uh, the voters will really appreciate that when they fund something that we deliver and we get it out there and get it, get it going. So that's what I would like to say.
All right, Commissioner North?
I won't reiterate everything that Commissioner Farrell just said because I agree with everything he said, but I am a little concerned and confused. When and where did, did downsizing occur? That, that's the first I'm hearing about it. Maybe I wasn't paying.
You, you weren't here.
Yes.
You weren't on the commission.
Okay, so it was done prior to?
Prior to you getting here.
Okay, so it was downsized prior to?
Because of, because of the funding we have. All right?
Well, I, I agree with Commissioner Farrell. I mean, we have an opportunity to build a first-class facility and the bigger is always better when it comes to youth activities, such as what I see in the community. So I would encourage us to rethink that. Um, we don't have a shovel in the ground yet. There's not even a tree taken down. So I would ask that we re, look at that again and maybe I'll think differently after I hear those comments. But, um, also just, uh, you touched on SPOLOST briefly. And we're gonna have a, um, a big decision for all these citizens to make come November and we need to get facts together. And I'd like to know, and it's given plenty of time to staff or whoever needs to get this information, but what percentage of the SPOLOST is paid by residents? And what is paid by, um, visitors?
Sixty forty.
Well, and.
I, I need, I need that in writing and where that data comes from.
Uh, we have been working with, uh, the chamber and, uh, Michael Tomer has given us a presentation. Uh, it, it was in the last couple of SPOLOST, the sixty forty number was the, uh, number that was touted. I think, uh, they're going back, the chamber's going back to revisit that, that number.
Do they have that?
They, they will have that before. Um, myself and city manager made a presentation to the, uh, chamber board and they've agreed to support and help, um, publicize and get out the information, uh, before the vote. So to answer your question, that, that number will be given to you.
And I'd like to revisit that.
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Let me see.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do agree with, uh, Pat regarding the building for growth. I think we've been fortunate. Chatham County has been forward-thinking. Our previous boards and how we approach these types of things. I do want to add, if we could involve some of the stakeholders, people who actually are boots-on-the-ground as far as recreation and activity, because one of the constituency concerns that I've gotten in, in particular when it comes to like tracks that have been built in the past, not necessarily ours, but community-available tracks that are built without an understanding of the real function of those tracks. So if we could have community stakeholders involved on this project, I think that would be helpful.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
The only, the only track we have, um, that we were involved with was the one that's of interstate, right?
Yes, sir.
That's, that's the only.
Well, ours is, ours is compliant and usable. I think the issue that constituency have with that track is the availability, the process to access it.
That's something that the staff need to work out with the.
Yes, sir.
With the, with the, uh, athletic director and those out there.
Yes, sir.
Because that's the, that's the only track we have that the county is, uh, with, that the county put in place. And, and, and in that, in that agreement, in that, in that, um, M O U or I G A, whichever one we did.
Yes.
Uh, it's, it's specified that the community is supposed to be able to.
Yes, sir.
Have use for that.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a timing thing that we need to work out.
Yes, sir.
That's the one in there.
Okay.
All right. Let me go to Commissioner Kicklight, I saw you next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just, um, trying to think of a way to say it.
Say it.
Nicely.
Say it.
If we want to do something in the name of underprivileged or lower-income children.
All children.
Building a facility that would be primarily occupied by middle-to-upper-income children that has at least one parent, at least one very involved parent around because they take them to all these tournaments and pay the entry fees, et cetera. This wouldn't be the way to have an effect on our lower-income, positive effect on our lower-income children. Putting a facility in one spot when some kids can't afford to drive across town or they don't have a parent, don't have a parent, and they may have a grandparent that can't drive, that's not gonna help that child. If we were to take the monies, break it down into smaller community-type centers, smaller gyms strategically placed with courts on them, with having tutors and everything as, as was explained, then you have an impact on the kids. They need to be able to walk or ride their bicycle to it. Years ago, the, the, the bigger, bigger is better theory is not always the great thing. Um, take our huge aquatic center, for example. I raised two kids and they've never swam there across town. But had the county years ago build a swimming pool out on the west side, near my house somewhere, built one on the east side, built one over on the, my kids probably would have swam there. This is a wonderful thing if you just got money to throw out there. The previous people on this board, one thought it'd be great to have an Indy racetrack.
Mm-hmm.
Never came, nothing ever came of it. What comes out of our swimming pool is great for those kids, those few that may wind up in college on a scholarship. It's, it's wonderful. But even at that, that's taking very involved parents who pays some type of fee to train them and pays the membership fees to swim there. So that's not helping the kids that necessarily need help. And it's costing taxpayers over a million dollars a year. And if you're talking building a facility that's how many ever, thousands of square feet, y'all are talking to put this mega basketball court thing down, we're gonna be blowing another million dollars a year on maintaining air conditioning, heating, and, um, doing things that's not necessary and darn sure wouldn't be done in the name of helping underprivileged children. It would definitely be nice for some middle-class to upper-class children that has a decent talent level, that they have the parent that pushes them to move forward. But this is not a facility for all children and it's many, many, many millions of dollars that's, in my opinion, would be, if you're talking in the name of underprivileged children that need help, it would be a waste of money. We can do smaller ones. We don't have one community center on, in West Chatham County that I'm aware of. Not one. And I'd be hard pressed, other than the couple of nice parks we have out there, to name a playground or a basketball court or anything. But here we want to spend, we're not satisfied. What, what was it slimmed down to eighteen million dollars instead of eighty million? Wow, and we complaining about that? That's just absolutely unbelievable, in my opinion. So that's, that's that. And I mean that with the respect that I knew it couldn't come out in a respectful manner because this is not gonna help any underprivileged children and I just don't want to hear it sold in that manner.
Commissioner Whigley.
Eighteen millions, we ought to be thrilled.
Commissioner Whigley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so, and I appreciate all my colleagues' comments and Commissioner Kicklight, I really appreciate your focus on the underprivileged, uh, community, even though that never was a part of this. It's my understanding, well, not that it, they would be a beneficiary. They, they would, the underprivileged community would be a beneficiary of this. Uh, but this facility is my understanding, based on reading minute, meeting minutes and lists, uh, that this regional athletic facility is the verbiage that was used, um, for multiple purposes, not just basketball. Um, again, we have the responsibility to help people evacuate during storm. It could be used for staging points. Uh, it could be used for other indoor sports. Um, I understand the notion of reducing the size and I, I definitely agree with, uh, reducing the size if we're gonna get it out the ground this year. If we're, if we're not gonna get things going, um, then, you know, I don't think we should reduce the size. Now, that reduction in size also would be more so what I'm thinking is a temporary thing. I hope that if we do reduce the size, that there is room to expand just so we can kind of see what the bond market does and, and so on and so forth over the next couple of years. Now, I just, I just want to be clear that, I know with all due respect, Mr. Manager, we've talked about this probably like every meeting, the last ten meetings. And we've been getting a design team together and it's been getting, supposed to go out to design, build, bid, and so on and so forth. And yet it's not on our procurement site as currently, um, out to bid. Um, and, and so, you know, I want to just ask for a little bit more detail when you're saying about getting a group together. I mean, what, can we, give us a more realistic timeframe?
Uh, for, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the board, uh, I'm not gonna rehash what was done, uh, because we've had several iterations of this project. As you can recall, when this project was first, when this concept was put before, uh, this board, uh, initially, and when we put the SPOLOST list together, it was two gymnasiums. It started out as two gymnasiums. And we allocated seventeen million dollars for two gymnasiums. Uh, a group of commissioners got together after that and then the concept of this mega gym came up. And we, we talked to you, uh, uh, a lot about what that was gonna take. You know, we had a consultant come in and, and did a market study. Uh, we came in and did some cost estimates and, well, we've got, uh, estimates, uh, somewhere between sixty and seventy million dollars for what y'all wanted. Uh, we went through a, a lot of work to, um, you know, determine the site and, uh, we had several sites. So, uh, this commission determined we do, uh, they voted to, uh, put this facility on the Abicorne site. So that's where we are. Subsequently, and, and, uh, the chairman, uh, and several board members said maybe the twelve-court gym was not what we need to do right now. So we are looking at something that's scalable. We'll try four to six and if, uh, the need arises, uh, the plan of, uh, staff is to have something that we can add to it if we needed to. Uh, so we still got a funding issue because even with the four to six, it's gonna take more than the seventeen million dollars, uh, that we've got allocated. So we're do, looking at funding. That coupled with, we still have several others that we're working on. So it's a, it's a, a total plan and this is just not an isolated, uh, project. We've got to look at it in totality. So we are putting together a, uh, a capital plan, uh, that y'all will be able to look and, and approve. Uh, I will say that when we went to the, the voters, uh, during, uh, when we were looking at SPOLOST and we, as Chairman indicated, we wanted to go out to each, each district to, uh, kind of survey to see what the, uh, citizens want. Uh, recreation, uh, was one of the top, uh, hot topics. So recreation, drainage and roads were the three things that all of the citizens that, uh, from the, uh, meetings I attended said they wanted. So we're prioritizing those and, uh, we are making movement on it. So I'll get you a, a schedule, uh, and that will be forthcoming.
I got it. And so, and just to be clear, and I want to echo Commissioner Farrell's, um, comment in that I think it's vitally important that this needs to be coming out of the ground before November because how can we go back to the citizens and ask them to vote for another SPOLOST? And we haven't even, we haven't even started this, you know? And so at this point where we are now, we haven't even started designing. Now, granted, we are a lot further along than square one and I do want to commend the team on that and I appreciate all of that information. There's been a lot to consider, uh, but I, I do think it's vitally important that this is coming out of the ground before November. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Milton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Cause this, the, the monies that we're talking about was allocated in previous SPOLOST.
SPOLOST seven.
Yes, sir.
The current SPOLOST. The current SPOLOST that we in, that's where the money is.
And that, that's the amount of money that was allocated.
That was what, and, and then also.
Has to be used for that particular purpose.
Right. Also, it says two gyms, not one. All right? It specifically says two, not one. You gotta do two. All right? And that, out of SPOLOST seven.
We already proved a second gym.
I know, but, but, but again, but again, I understand this. You got to have the monies in place, all right? And, and, uh, I'll say this so that all of you understand. Just like we floated the barn for the courthouse, I'm not above floating the barn. But I do think that what they're doing now is strategically planning how are we gonna get it done, all right? And then roll into the new SPOLOST, which is SPOLOST eight, is heavy on the recreation side because not only do folks want to see the new gym, but they want a track, all right? On the, on the south side, out, uh, uh, Wilmington Island side, they want to see the, um, soccer fields, lacrosse fields, multiple fe, multiple-use fields. But they want it to be just like the, like we have at the Ross, all right? Complex. So when staff is trying to put all together from each district, what we've, um, did and what we, then they're trying to come forward with a timeline. But I too, now, and, and I'm not saying anything I haven't said to staff and the managers, I too think that we ought to be out of the ground before this, end of this year, all right? Before we, SPOLOST comes up. And, and I've said to them, uh, the minute we can get the design team together and let them start the design. And I also think that what we need to do as well is that we need to break the commissioners down into, uh, work with the design team so that if this is, this is in District five and six, and I'm just using y'all because I'm looking at you, okay? Then you need to be a part of the meeting with the design team so that we come out. Plus, we need to have. Plus we need to have some, uh, constituents who are gonna be using these things, involved in that, okay? The same thing need to happen in other things that we're doing, okay? Um, so, um, it's not that we taking too long to do things, but you gotta remember now, we became aggressive because there were SPOLOST projects back from SPOLOST two and three that had not even been started, that our engineering, and you heard the engineer said our last meeting, "I wish I had more staff, I wish I had more staff," all right?
And we should give them more staff.
And no, okay? So when they take those requests to the, uh, finance team and they look at what's available, they tell them whether they can add on or whether they can't add on. And I tell you, one of the biggest things that, that's, 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 um, in our cup now is that we've gotta get more officers at the jailhouse and we've gotta get more officers at the courthouse, all right? And along with, uh, those, um, positions that we approved in the budget to be added on to certain departments, okay? So, uh, when, I'm, I'm saying that so that we don't think that there's just this big pot of money sitting over here and we're not doing anything with it. All right? Because that's not, that's not the case, nor the answer. Now, Commissioner, um, before I go to anybody else, Commissioner, um, Lockit, did I see your hand?
Yes, you did.
Okay, go.
I go along with the, um, district concept as far as recreation to make sure all of the areas have basic recreational equipment and facilities. And there are some, I, I'm getting calls all the time about, "We need this in this area, we need this or that." So we need to get that covered, which is basically the basics. Then we can move on eventually to some of these bigger things that we're talking about. But first of all, we need to get the basic things together. I've had somebody call me just yesterday about, uh, pickleball court. And they had someone talking about skateboard court, so, that's a lot-
Even, even, even someone approached me about an indoor skate, skating rink. I mean, uh, what, yeah, skateboard, not just a skating rink, the skate boy.
Skate park.
The skate park, but they want it to be indoors, all right? So those are kind of things that they have to take into consideration and can we do it? Can we not do it? Is the money there? Will the money be there? And so there's just not sitting in the room and say, "Let's do it." Cause then you're gonna give Linda heartburn.
And we also need to make a convention so these kids can get to-
So they can get there.
About walking or riding a bike or whatever.
I agree with you. All right? Come on, Commissioner Hart, don't come in there.
Mr. Kegler, we do have other facilities that are on the SPOLOST schedule.
Yes, ma'am.
And so when we get a timeline, will it be a comprehensive timeline? Cause I know like, can't, you know, I'm Jackson Camp Park, they want their facility and that was something that my predecessor actually began conversations with them about. So will that be included in the timeline?
Well, everything that the sport is approved, yes, it will be on timeline.
Thank you.
All right. Now, get everybody, come back to Commissioner Farrell.
Right. So the genesis of this large facility came from meetings that I had at Lake Mare where I asked coaches to come and tell me what their concerns were ten years ago, maybe twelve, I can't even remember how far back it was. And that's what bubbled up. Not only the day-to-day things with, you know, officials and striping and what have you, but they're the ones that brought up the fact that there is no regional indoor facility that can hold, uh, major, uh, major tournaments, major anything. You can go to the convention center, but that's a whole nother ballgame. That is a whole nother set of level to try to have something big over there. Uh, my point being earlier, there, there's a lot of facets to this, but for seventeen million dollars, you can pour a slab of concrete and throw up a metal barn and paint it nice and put some stripes on it and make it presentable and have a large facility and you can do it without adding more money to it. Now, I would, you know, I would love to have the most fancy building and all that sort of thing, but you can start out with a slab of concrete, a large metal building with some breakout rooms, you know, you, you're plumbing, you, you locker rooms, what have you. It doesn't have to be the fanciest thing in the world. It doesn't have to be sixty or seventy million dollars that, I mean, that's, that's, that's a lot of money. Once you build this thing, it won't take all very long to realize how popular it is and how much it'll be used. And when you talk about where it's located, are you kidding me? Within five miles, there's a hundred thousand people. And that's without even doing the math. Now, do we need facilities in our particular areas? Yes, we do. I've got a, uh, just on the Wilmington Whitmarsh area, if, if we put a, a regional, a gymnasium that would just serve those particular youth, we got twenty-five thousand people within five miles of, of a centrally located place that we already own. So, you know, this is an urban city and it's right in the center and it's gonna be served by the bus lines and, and everything else. So Monday through Thursday, I envision this thing being heavily used by our youth in Chatham County. And third, Friday, Saturday and Sunday, I would envision that once it got up and rolling out in year two or three, that there'd be somebody booking this thing for something. And the pickleball people, the, I mean, just volleyball, everything, anything you could play indoors. You, if it's raining for a week like it is, all, all the football teams would come in there and run around in their socks. I remember doing that at the Y when I was playing Gray Y back in the day. So I wouldn't let the money cripple the project and the vision. Build the project to the budget we have. When a government comes out and says, "Hey, we're gonna build this," everybody just, you know, figures there's a blank check, just do whatever, you know, and you could, you want to stick to a budget, fine. You got seventeen million, maybe add another five or ten or whatever you can, and build a plain old building and get it built. And but, but don't lose the concept of the, the reason it's large is so that you can have bigger stuff that nobody else is having. Of course, anybody can build a two, two, two gyms, Calvary has two gyms, but I don't see a whole lot going on out of the ordinary over there on one, on one site. But I've been told over and over again, you can't have a basketball tournament, for instance, in this county because you gotta have ten different sites. Um, and I'm not even an athletic person. I don't have any athletes that I'm pushing to, you know, I, I, I don't have any, anybody, it's nothing personal, it's just something that the community needs and we should stick to that vision. And in SPOLOST eight, we should go to, to the Wilmington Island area and build a, a regional gym and we should go out to the west side and if there was one needed that Poole hadn't already built, then build one over there and wherever. I, I, why not all the above?
All right. Got it, bud?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just a different perspective and I, I was never academically, um, athletically inclined to begin with, but I attended a lot of different games and I can tell you that a different perspective is, as my fellow Commissioner Kickley stated about, and I don't even want to get on the, the whole, um, more privileged, less privileged thing. We're building this for citizens, in my opinion. And the citizens that are more privileged that, and stated that they would be the ones using it, they're the ones that probably have the money to travel out of town. They probably enjoy going out of town to be out of the county. This would enable the ones who cannot afford to go out of the area to attend a first-class competition. That's the way I look at it. And, you know, again, I'm not that athletically inclined like Commissioner Kickley and, um, and Mr. Whiteley and, and, uh, Pat Farrell, but I can tell you that we can look at it any way we want to, but at the end of the day, the children are the ones who will suffer whether we build it or we don't build it. And I've been on here seven months and, and I'm hopefully gonna hear something very soon that we're gonna go to a groundbreaking and have some shovels in the ground and we can, whatever it is, but I'm in full agreement, we've got to move forward in a timely manner because it, it's gotta get done.
Sure. You, you talking about seven years, I've been sitting here for four year, for four years and some more and nothing has been done, all right? So that's a part of, that's a part of doing. Uh, I gotta come to, uh, Commissioner Milton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, and I'm, I'm in agreement with all of you all, but, you know, as Commissioner Kickley said, there's nothing on the west side. And I'm not talking Poole, I'm talking you go out seventeen and all of my, all of those neighborhoods and those neighborhoods have children and, and, and some of them have seniors that needs to have a place to do something, all, uh, senior daycare or, or, I mean, we need something out there. I know that if we don't, what, what you're working with now is SPOLOST money from seven, but we're asking for eight. And from eight, I want to be able to offer my constituents something that when I ask them to vote, I want to be able to offer them something that will fulfill that need. And if I'm gonna, if I'm gonna, if I'm gonna go out and, and, and have this as a, uh, I want to make it happen. If I want to make it happen, I, I'm, you know, you gotta, gotta offer them something.
Be careful you're not advertising. Don't get in trouble advertising. Come on, Commissioner Kickley.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Look, I'm, I'm not, I wasn't trying to say that I don't want a good place for-
We know.
-middle income and upper income.
Right, we know.
I do for them to, and for lower income. I just simply meant that if you want to make an argument to build a large facility, to use the argument that it would be of some great benefit for the underprivileged children in our area, I don't think that's a very good argument for it. I like what, um, Commissioner Whiteley had to say about multi-use-
Right.
-multi-use this and that and the other benefits of that, but I just, you know, I believe there, if, if our goal was to really be able to help the children in, in need and keeping them off the streets, then, then naturally neighborhood recreational activities would be the way to go if that was the goal. But if your, if your goal includes that, which I'm sure that is part of it, then that's fine, but, but it, it's just one point that's among many others, like you said, the-
Right.
-multi-use facilities and everything, so.
Multi-use, all right? And, and let me say now, and, and, and we have to make sure we get our verbiage right, okay? Cause when we say we want to do a Taj Mahal, a Taj Mahal ain't no cement slab and no tin roof. That's what I'm talking about, all this.
Chairman, I do agree with Commissioner Farrell-
I agree too.
-that if you look out on the west side, I'm sure there's, there's, they could beat on a door and get the plans from one of the warehouses that actually looks nice on the outside, build that, air condition it-
And go with it.
-and be done for a whole lot less than seventeen million.
All right.
So I do agree.
It's a, it's a big open building. It's a big warehouse with stripes and some breakout-
And it could actually look nice on the outside.
But it doesn't have to be extremely expensive. Seventeen million can build a lot of building.
Well, it, it, we need to build two with seventeen million. We need to build two. Don't lose track of that. All right? Did, yeah. Did I get everybody now?
Well, you'll be-
All right, listen now, there is a need for us to go back into executive session, so may I have a motion to recess back into executive session?
Second.
All right. Properly move, second, that we go back and recess back into executive session for litigation, personnel and acquisition, all right? Motion made, second.
Thank you all for focusing in on this project.
Cash your votes.
Thank you for talking about it.
Cash your votes.
Thank you for putting it on the front banner.
Fire.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
There we go.
Do something.[1756.15]